Right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. How are you? Everybody's okay? Thank you so much for being here tonight. We know the weather is horrible and there are other places that you could have been, but we appreciate you being here with us. The Board of Trustees, the ALEE Independent School District is not convening, now wishing to extend a warm welcome to everyone that is present. Our mission at ALEE ISD is to work collaboration with parents in the community to provide an exemplary education for all students in a safe environment. As the ALEE Board of Trustees, we're here to say go, adopt policies, approve budgets, contract personnel appointments, and communicate the district's vision and the success for the community. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and the day-to-day operation of the district are the responsibilities of the district superintendent. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. School board meetings are open to all who wish to attend and to hear the matter discussed. Audience participation is limited to the pageant presentation portion of the meeting. These proceedings are being taken, recorded, and all posted and archived in the local online ALEE ISD district website in accordance to Section 551.128 of Texas Open Meeting Act. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening and to join us in the interest of ALEE Independent School District. At this time, please stand as the Director of Public Relations, Ms. Kim Smith. We'll introduce the group meeting, the pledge, and the Texas pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
Good evening, Board members. The presentation of the orders and pledges being led by this evening by members of the Elsec High School Air Force junior ROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one man invisible.
Let's give a round of applause for that.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. I saw how they pivoted and they were more into that and they were not being able to face with us in their ROTC. They look like they're having much, much more fun than I am. Thank you guys so much. At this time, Mr. Chambers, the Board will allow you to do the recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. This evening, the Board would like to recognize a gentleman that many is not a stranger, but are going the extra mile award recognition this evening goes to Mr. Ernie Lozano. Ernie, if you don't mind just standing real quickly. For those of you who do not know, Ernie has been teaching at ALEE since 2005. He's been involved in various community programs, including Lifeway Rehabilitation and Voice2Men, it's a mentoring program for troubled male students. As a member of our Career Technology Education Program, Mr. Lozano builds positive relationships with his students and he delivers not only his curriculum, but sound advice on how to be a successful adult, what the good man and the young lady. During the fall semester, Mr. Lozano heard of a young male student who was missing many, many days at school. He reached out to the student and found out that the student was working during the week and on the weekends to assist his family. His parents were having financial difficulties, so this student did what he could do to help out. Unfortunately, this led to many absences at school and obviously a drop in his grades and his academic performance. Mr. Lozano then reached out to the Students Council and came up with a plan. He called our district's business partner Sterling McCall Toyota, and I'll mention why that's relevant in a second. But he called Sterling McCall Toyota to see if they would be able to hire the student and whether they'd be willing to work around his academic schedule. Obviously, they did. Mr. Lozano displays selfless actions almost on a daily basis and does not want any credit. And I can tell you, he's uncomfortable standing up in front of you right now. That's tough, Ernie. You're going to have to put up with it. The only way we found out from this was from the Students Council. If it weren't for her reaching out to the administration and letting us know about the selfless actions that Ernie provided for the champagne, we would never have known. But this is what he does over and over and over again. He goes above and beyond for our students. He does it with the utmost humility. You know, Ernie, for those who do not know, is one of the auto tech instructors over at the Center for Advanced Careers. Prior to that, he spent many years at Elsec and has helped guide many a young man, young lady in the area of auto, mechanics, auto tech, all fields related to auto and the auto industry. And they're sprinkled all over the greater Houston area. Dealerships, garages, and shops, and making livings and providing for their family. And these things, this one incident that I've just read is probably one of hundreds over Ernie's career. It's one of thousands and thousands of what educators do every day. Teachers, counselors, it happens every day, many times, multiple times a day in every school, in every district in the state of Texas and across this country. So I know we have one man standing up here representing one act, but I want you to know, in this particular case, you're representing hundreds and hundreds of thousands of adults in the education profession who go way beyond teaching curriculum. And for that, I am grateful and I appreciate you, Ernie. So thank you very much, Ernie. There's a lot of your colleagues sprinkled around. If you're a colleague of Ernie's over at the Center, would you please stand? You're representing him. I'm going to call him back there. Anyway, thank you, Ms. Williams, and the Board for allowing us to recognize Ernie for his selfless acts. Anything else?
Thank you, Ernie, for coming and sitting there and being a little uncomfortable with us. I know that if we were in the auto tech area, there'd be plenty to say there, right? In the zone, correct? Thank you so much for what you've done on behalf of all of us. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask that we are at the donation report. Ms. Dee Jones. Now, may I also add that, Ernie, I missed the photo with the rest of the board members. I'm going to come over to the Center myself and get a personal one. Thank you so much. Dee Jones.
Please, gentlemen, Board of Trustees, guests, donations for February 2019. $25,000 of local screen services, ALEE ISD. $10,000 of Shell Technology Center, ALEE ISD. $4,880 Houston Food Bank Backpack Buddy, ALEE ISD. $4,000 First Team Travel Foundation, ALEE ISD. $3,925 Houston Food Bank Teachers Aid Program, ALEE ISD. $3,889.50 American Bakery Cafe, ALEE ISD. $3,189 Fort Ben Church, ALEE ISD. $3,000 Mr. Sadros Saichanar, Elsec ROTC. $2,670 Sign Deco Makunga, ALEE ISD. $2,500 Morning Donut Shop, ALEE ISD. $2,500 TBK CTV. $1,750 Journey Lutheran Church, Lisma. $1,400 Microsoft, Elsec. $1,217.44 Sherborn, Albright. $1,086.12 Thomas Chutes, Chambers. $1,000 Mr. Scott Zane Insurance Risk Management. $1,000 Mr. Matthew Moreno, Kicks. $1,000 Kicks Sporting Goods, ALEE ISD. $988.18 Thomas Chutes, Hearn. $917.58 Thomas Chutes, Kaplan. $850 Great Houston Community Foundation, Boom. $800 Henry Howard Pizza, ALEE ISD. $798 Thomas Chutes, Chancellor. $789 Mr. Michael Pratt, ALEE ISD. $700 Target Field Trip Program, Transom. $605 in the Sound truly and parent support services, Collins. $700 Mr. Norma Zarin, Reese. $500 Orange Man U System, LSC, ALEE ISD. $500 HEB, ALEE ISD. $500 Mr. Kent Dolly, Elsec. $500 Diamond House 3, ALEE ISD. Grand total, $83,126.24.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Now, I would love to approve the donation report.
I believe that we approved the donation report.
Send them one down next week. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Send them one down next week. I have a second one. It's all in favor. And show five zero.
Thank you. Mr. Chambers, Board of Trustees, and guests, tonight I would like to introduce two of our wonderful business partners. The Cary Nagy's Mentoring Program has partnered with our school district for eleven years. Students are provided mentorships starting in third grade through high school into their college careers as well. After graduating high school, students are offered scholarships to Texas A&amp;M. Tonight, we have a short presentation from the Directors of the ALEE Program, Ms. Anne Goldsmith, Fred Wong, Heidi Joseph, and Sharif Esam. Please come forward.
You go.
Anne, where are we supposed to go?
Anne, come here.
Anne.
Well, thank you all for having us. We are a group from the Cary Nagy's Mentoring Program. And again, we have been mentoring the same group of kids from within ALEE. We started with a group in third grade. And we're now graduating our second class, second year. This is the first time out of ALEE that we have had in the second class that we've actually had a student that has gotten accepted to A&amp;M. And it's super exciting. I'm going to A&amp;M, talking shit like A&amp;M.
Not only that, she also got early admission. And she got the major she wanted. And she wanted this major since she was in the 10th grade. Very determined young lady. And as an ALEE tradition, as me, personal tradition, every camp student that gets admitted to A&amp;M, I give them a T-shirt for his or her class year. So you sign it. This is your class T-shirt. Class Condi Condi Foot.
All right. Here.
Thank you for having us.
Next, we have the Houston West Chase Warrior Club. The Houston West Chase Warrior Club has held its soup promo cook-off for the past five years. All funds raised go towards students' college scholarships. We are supporting eight ALEE students for all four years of their college careers. We have Ms. Joan Parker, please come forward. And following her, we have Mr. Adam Shaw, our club president.
Good evening, Mr. Chambers, Board of Trustees, and guests. On behalf of the Houston West Chase Warrior Club, I would like to thank Taylor High School Principal, Ms. Mary William, the Audio Video Productions Teacher, Ms. Jarrah Booer, and his students for volunteering to be DJ for and for the annual Houston West Chase Warrior Super Bowl cook-off for this past six years. Mr. Booer, would you please come forward and accept the token of our appreciation from our Warrior Club members?
I'm trying to get in this photo because I'm never getting it. I'm never getting enough.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have our president, Mr. Adam Shaw.
Good evening. I want to take just a quick moment. I don't think Dee did justice to this event, nor did Joan. This was a major fundraiser for us. I think this year, we cleared just about $11,000. And well, first of all, thank you very much to Dee for all of her support. I want to thank the Board for allowing her the flexibility to help us. When she helps us, we can turn around and then help you. I think this is a great opportunity. This year, we had, I think it was a fantastic year. We had more participation. And I was very pleased to see all the schools that came. And it is heartwarming to see the students that we're trying to help, them participating and being part of our this community event. So for many reasons, this was a great year. One of the other reasons is we had three different schools show up. And we weren't prepared for that. That was something that was fantastic. But overwhelmingly, ALEE ISD, they want, we have. It's still around. You taste all the different soups. Everybody, well, not everybody, a large percentage of people vote for ALEE. So what I'd like to do is take a moment to recognize Delicia Simon and Chef West. And I don't know if you have any culinary students here, but take a moment to recognize you for your outstanding soup, your continued anticipation, and really to ask you, come back again next year. So on behalf of the Houston West Chase Warrior Club, we'd like to present you this, the first place award for the 2017.
Always. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you for bringing a crowd of these people in here and lots of this stuff to talk about. Give them all a hand here, please. Okay, Board, I'm looking at the agenda and I know that we have, I'm looking at the agenda and I know that we have quite a few things that are going on tonight, weather delay in some people, some people are ill. I'm going to ask if you would, please allow me to move to the consent agenda and come right back to the pageant presentation, if that is okay with you. Is that okay? All right. If that is okay, I'm going to ask, is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have pulled for discussion?
6.19, consider the approval of the audit engagement letter. I would like to have that one pulled. And 6.15, consider and approve the order authorizing the issuance of the ALEE Independent School District Tax School Building and Funding Vowels Series 20019.
Are there any other?
6.9, oh, 6.9, 6.15.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if we're calling it audit. Thank you, Ms. Butler. Have approval to, now have a motion to approve the balance? Now have a motion to approve the other items? It's been moved by Ms. Butler and seconded by Mr. Wynn. All in favor of approving the rest of the original? Thank you. That's five zero. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Butler. You were asking about 6.9s, the engagement letters.
My question regarding the audit engagement letter is that we've used Whitley and Penn for several years. Have we ever done a cook-through to see about other audit firms that we have looked at, or haven't they completed a bid?
Yes, I can't remember what year it was, but we did do it. An RFQ and awarded the RFQ to Whitley Penn. I want to say it was in 2014, but 13.
How often, Mr. Woods, did we, and Jay, do we, how often? Because I've been here for most of those audits as well, but.
So, the time previous to that, I cannot recall because I wasn't in that. It was a long time previous to that. Because a company in Whitley Penn picked up a company called Noel Larsson. Noel Larsson was originally our auditor before Whitley Penn. Whitley Penn acquired them nationally. They swallowed up a number of firms. So we did an RFQ after Whitley Penn acquired Noel Larsson. And then since that point, we haven't done another RFQ.
So we've been, so did we just roll over into Whitley Penn because of Noel Larsson? But you said that we did an RFQ.
We did an RFQ after Whitley Penn acquired Noel Larsson and re-awarded the audit contract to Whitley Penn, which included the people from Noel Larsson because they were now part of the company.
So the last time the Board should be even at the back of the list?
2014. Except for that, we proved that we wanted engagement letter, I believe. Last year is a single year. The first year, I believe, was a three-year engagement when we awarded the RFQ. And I think we've awarded two since then, a single-year engagements.
Mr. Woods, typically, when do districts decide to change? I mean, and you'll probably hear me say this over and over. I know that we have relationships with companies for years and years. But where's the checks and the balances to say that this is saving the district? Or we want to make sure that the public don't think that we're just getting comfortable with individuals.
Sure. So we don't, we didn't award it based on price. We awarded it based on their qualifications and their portfolio of school districts that are comparable in size in Texas. And when we make an award like that, typically would be for a multi-year engagement to start. And then an extension would be a one-year extension at a time as long as the Board's comfortable with that firm. There was an attempt in statute to change that to where it was every three years mandatory. And that was about, I think, four years ago. And they retracted that at the last, TEA did. And the recommendation is if you are with a firm, a large firm like that, that is qualified, has done a good job, and you have no reason to change, then you at least rotate the partner that's overseeing the engagement. And so what we do is we rotate the partner in the firm who is over the audit annually. So that no one partner becomes too comfortable.
Another thing is that we do a survey of all surrounding districts to ensure that the prices that we're receiving are competitive. And we've always been on the lower end of the prices that not only Whitley Penn, but other firms charge to comparable districts. So we do informal price comparisons.
And the type of audit that they do is just a basic annual required compliance audit? There's no other time which we can engage or ask for an engagement of any other audit firm?
Yeah, they're only required audit.
Yeah, so are they like an NWE, or are they specific as a dinner? Are they a minority or women-owned intercraters?
Is there any other questions, any other discussions or questions?
How do we, how long have we been at Whitley Penn and have we got other offers?
At Whitley Penn, I believe, under that name since they acquired Noel Larsson. And so before that was Noel Larsson. So you could say that we've been with the same audit firm for several decades. And one of the differences is that Whitley Penn picked up Noel Larsson and they're a national firm as opposed to just a local Texas.
So I guess, understanding audits, and I don't do financial audits. Once upon a time, it was data audits. And understanding and working with large national companies like that, I understand how they do, will take them out. But this is the first time that we really, as a Board, had a conversation about, you know, how we're doing business with these companies. I think at the end of the day, the push is always about, are we comfortable with people we're working with? Are we giving them best bang for our buck? So, you know, that's the only questioning that I think is happening here at the table. So at some point, I know the attitude is if it's not broken, it doesn't have to be fixed. However, when it comes down to the tax dollars, the taxpayers are looking at us, asking us, why do we continue to do that? So in turn, we come back and we ask you people who have been involved in it for all these years, you know, why is this continuing that way?
Yeah. The last time we did do an RFQ, we did get, I think there were two responses. Another somewhat large firm that does districts in Texas, school districts, districts also responded. And, um, when it came down to it, we brought them to the board and the board interviewed each of those auditors, you know, committee decisions, so that to come back and say, this is the board choice. So going forward, if we were to do that again, we would do it the same way. Do another RFQ and then bring back the finalists for you to do an interview.
All right, so we'll talk about that in, um, in the future if this should come up again on this board. We'll talk about that again in the future because the other thing is we have board members that are not here for this conversation. And I'd like for the entire board to understand and hear that. I would like to have a motion to approve this particular item on the agenda. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Keen. Now I have a second. This is seconded by Mr. Nguyen. All in favor of approving, I'm sorry, approving the audit engagement letter? Show of hands. So it's four opposed, abstaining. So we have, um, four. I'm sorry, did I have a second? Oh, my apologies. Let me set their record straight. Four, four approved, one, two, three, four approved, and one abstaining. Thank you. Item number 615. Ms. Butler, you want to add?
Hi, Charles, can you please explain the difference between like the negotiated lease and the competitive lease? I know I have never seen a competitive lease typed in, this kind of a school bond purchase of that property. So can you kind of explain the difference for that? Like, it's okay.
Okay. Okay, so, this, this bond sale, um, just as a kind of a background, this bond sale is the fourth installment of our six installments of bond sales in the, in the 2015 referendum. In all those previous to this, as well as all the way back to the, the previous bond referendum, 2003, back to, um, I wanna say it was in 2007, no, eight, 2008, um, we started working with competitive transactions as opposed to negotiated. So years and years ago, the school districts could issue competitive transactions for new money and negotiated transactions for refundings. Uh, and then it was changed to where it was negotiated anytime you wanted, refunding more new. Typically, a refunding transaction, which we have embedded in this bond sale, we have a, we have a new money issue and we have a refund. Refunding is on 2010 bonds. We have, uh, three years' worth of bonds that we're refunding, uh, for a saving, uh, estimated savings of $134,000 to the taxpayer. The, uh, the new money is being done as a competitive, as we've done in the past. And the reason that we are doing it that way, or the, the differences are, is that we, uh, put out an official statement, just like normal, that, that offers it to the world as, okay, this is our bond sale, these are our financials, these are our tax rate, our enrollment, all that. And allows the, the municipal bond buying market to salivate over that for a while while it's waiting on the bid date. So a bid date is set and then bids are taken electronically through a online third-party system, um, that all the municipal issuers use for bidding. And we award that to the lowest net cost. And I say that, they call it true interest cost, the lowest cost to this, to the school district over the course of the entire, uh, issue. So all 20 years, including all interest, all fees and everything, the lowest cost gets the bid. If it meets certain parameters. And the parameters you're, you're setting in this authorization for us to execute this sale says that we have to at least achieve an overall interest cost of 4.25%. We're expecting to be somewhere around three or a little under as, as our interest cost. And as long as our refunding savings, net present value savings are at least 1%, then we're achieving more than that based on the current market. Negotiated, on the other hand, is where you pick an underwriter. Of all the underwriters that are out there, you can do an RFQ, which we have an RFQ and we have awarded underwriters. But if we were to do that, we pick an underwriter as the lead, you pick several underwriters as the co-manager, and they create a syndicate of, of sales folks that go out and then market those bonds and try and get a targeted date, try to get the best possible price for the district that they can. And they're, it's negotiated from the standpoint of, there is no bid. So a competitive sale that we're doing is transparent, it's open, it, it brings the same people to the table, the same bankers, the same, uh, sales channels, secondary sales channels. And, and what we've proven over time is that on the same day of our sale, negotiated deals, if you look at those, you know, for the past few years, for instance, last year, if we would've done negotiated like a, a school district did, I won't name the school district, but we would've, we would've, it would've cost us another $800,000 to have last year's bond sale to the taxpayer. The year before that, about $1 million. So, we always do our F.A. Financial Advisor, Louis Wilks, and U.S. Capital Advisors does a post-sale analysis with any negotiated deals to prove to us that we hit the market and we got good pricing. For the last three years, um, last year, we got nine bids from firms, uh, for the, the purchaser or the takedown firm, which included 61 backend firms who actually took some of those bonds and then either held or sold into the secondary market. Seven, 2017, we got eight bids overall, 54 firms participated. And the year before that, 2016, we had six bids, 46 firms participated. So timing is, is a lot of everything. The other thing about a competitive sale is, um, we set the, the date and when it's gonna occur. And if it doesn't meet the parameters that you set, we don't accept the bids. If it does meet the parameters that you set and we think it's, we got what we went to the market for and we got the best deal, we get a number of bidders, we award it right then and there. That saves us another few basis points on price because those banks can all take that money and, and send those, those orders out and, and lock up the dollars instantaneously as opposed to waiting a whole other month for the board to approve a bid sale. So, that's the short...
So, that's what I was explaining. So, these aren't the bond sales, but those last bonds you made, right? This is the one for Florida, right? 2014?
No, these, so it was part. Part of it is, there's a refunding of six, sorry, there's a refunding in here, uh, 6.6 million, uh, a maximum of 7 million. And that will be, that will be from the 2010 series, which was part of the 2003 bond referendum. Then there's 57.6 million of new money from the 2015 bond referendum. So those issue, those, those are 20-year bonds. The refunding bonds will be like four-year bonds. So they're just refunding them for the last few years of their life. Refunding is like re- getting a second, refinancing your home, but not extending another, all the way up to 30 years again, only extending to the original term of your original mortgage because the market's better than it was in 2010.
Mr. Woods, I knew that you would enjoy having a conversation about this. I really did. And I, I don't mean to be facetious, but I, I really did, I knew. But I, I did also have concerns and I'm glad that Louis is here as well. Again, my greatest concern was the fact that we, when was the last time we did a negotiated sale? When was the last time? 2012. And prior to that, the majority of the time, we did competitive?
Prior to that was, we did mostly negotiated. Not for new money, I'm sorry. Did, did for refundings, the refundings.
All right. So in the back of my mind, as I was reading this, and it, it occurs to me, that's why I sent the email stating, hey, this is a, a lot. And, um, one of my conversations is, you know, when, of course, the board doesn't wanna get into the weeds, we don't do that. We don't go along with the governor's line. But at the, at the same time, the board has to represent the public concerning how we do, um, with the money. So that's why I asked a question about what's the difference in going competitive versus negotiated? And for me, when I discovered it on my research, it's just a matter of what people's preferences are.
Well, there's, there's a little more under the, under the, how the sausage is made, if you will, in that, like I was saying about the bidding, um, you know, we bid passes and paper to save every penny. Bidding makes it an open process. Every, every bank, every buyer of bonds, no matter where they are in the world, can participate in that sale as a partner that they have other, other relationships outside of ALEAF. In a negotiated deal, that's not necessarily the case. Because you don't know that, you don't know with the negotiations of all of those purchasers going on in the background. That's handled by your, your lead underwriter that you select. And there's a lot of trust in that. The reason that people go negotiated mostly today is they have bad credit risk, which we don't. We have the second-to-the-top Moody's rating, we're PSF-backed, AAA guaranteed bonds. You have a reason to manipulate the tax rate over the long term, like you're approaching the 57 debt limit. Or you need to amortize the debt out at the back end, kinda like a balloon, because you can't afford it upfront. We don't have that problem. The other is, is that you're not having, you have to balance the debt service or with your payments. We don't have to do that. We balance our debt retirement. That, that rewards us well with Moody's and ratings and that we, each year, we're retiring the same amount of debt out of that bond sale. So by the time we get to the end, we've got just a few, uh, percentage, 0.5, 10% of that debt that we're paying off in that last year. Whereas other districts who, who do these negotiated deals and these, uh, variable rate deals and puts and so forth, actually are paying somebody upfront just interest, not principal, just to get that little extension for a couple of years so they can go back out in the market and resell those bonds again. So, um, we're not in that position where we have to avoid creative financing. And, and at the same time, I think that, that our voters have trusted us over the years in passing the referendum because we are upfront on the, on the referendum side of what our tax rate's gonna be. And we're not moving things around after the, after the market.
So I'm gonna let Mr. Wilks speak for a minute because, you know, he heard that the Whitleys have consigns and he jumped sharp for me tonight. My pleasure to do with you tonight, Louis Wilks with U.S. Capital Advisors. Mr. Woods has, has said most of what you need to hear, I think, related to that process. We've studied the market extensively. We just believe that the best way to get the, the best price, the lowest interest rate, is to bring that competitive nature into the process. And that lowers your interest cost and then thus lowers the tax burden on, and tax, uh, the burden on taxpayers. So, the, the process is transparent, it's open to everybody. Uh, we welcome anybody that wants to bid because at the bottom line, when we get the bids, we're going to the lowest interest cost. And that's who wins the bid. So we think that is the best for schools that are looking for that, looking for the absolute best price that they can get on that bond. So, in, in doing that, Mr. Wilks, um, because we've, we've done, this is not our first rodeo. So in doing that, we've gotten different people to participate in, in the, in the sales, right? We have, we can, I could truly say, or you can help me to say, that when we've gone competitive, it's not the same people over and over because it's getting out.
Yes, in fact, uh, Charles mentioned the 61 bidders. Just, just to go back through the last three series, in the, in the 18 series, Piper Jaffrey won the bid. And, uh, they were on, they were by themselves, but we had, I think, nine, 10 bidders in this transaction. And on the 17 traction, uh, transaction, Bank of America Merrill Lynch won the bid. And there were 54 firms competing in that, uh, in, in the bid process. And then the year before that, uh, the winner, winning bidder was Artie Bear. So each year, it, uh, it may be a different bank and from a different part of the world. As Charles said, uh, this is AAA rated debt, it's the best, uh, backed by the best guaranteed program in the world, the premise school fund guaranteed program. So people want these bonds, so let's let them have it and, and, and drive that, that price up, the interest rate down through that bidding process.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions regarding this item? So, Board, I'm gonna, um, ask for a motion to approve item number 615. Let me also add, because, um, I don't think this is in there, so for those who are, are listening to us, hash over these numbers and everything, at the end of the day, this is about being able to go ahead and move forward on the purpose, and I don't think that is... I mean, this is in the, in the writing here, I don't know if this is in there.
As well, the, uh, the Elsec HBXB bid that we awarded and the, uh, Miller Roof bid that we awarded tonight.
Yeah, I always wanna talk about, when we talk about money, I need to make it a visual for everyone to know what, why we're talking about that money and why it's so important. Uh, and, um, I'm very pleased that what we've done is force for our bond and being able to pay it down. Taxpayers have been pretty happy, but you have other people, we have people to answer to. And I say "we" because I am one of those board members that, you know, people will come up to me from out of nowhere. And I don't have Mr. Wilks' phone number that I can call and say, let, let him answer for me.
Now, I will say this, um, there are districts who do negotiated sales sometimes because they want to carve out a certain dollar amount of bonds and offer them to the local taxpayers at a set rate. In other words, they want, you know, the taxpayers who wanna buy those bonds, ALEAF bonds and hold them themselves, you know, they could do that too. And, and we have not done that. What we've done is said that here are the firms who bought the, the bonds and they're purchasable by anybody from certain ones of those firms buy and hold, but a large majority of them push them into the secondary market.
Yeah, I'm sort of in the impression that at least 80% of school districts go negotiated, not competitive.
That's probably about, about right. It could be even, it goes with the ebb and flow based on the market and like, like I was saying, based on all those other districts, financial condition and what kind of manipulations they have to do with their debt to make payments.
Yeah, pass those to districts.
And whatever, whatever the winning date of the bid, you know, as, as in years past, I'll communicate who the, the bids were from, the total price and whether or not it would be achieved. And let the board know as well as, um, I can share the, the post-sale analysis from, about if we would've done a negotiated deal, because somebody in state will do a negotiated deal within a day of the deal we're gonna do, so.
And just so you know, this, this discussion about competitive versus negotiating happens all the time. All right, Louis?
Sure.
We have had this conversation both internally and in the week. Poor Charles and Deanna get hammered at some conference where all these others are out there trying to influence them to go negotiate. And then I told Louis, I told Charles and Deanna, I said, if you can ever bring back evidence that negotiating could be a better deal for our taxpayers, then we'll consider it. But until, until that, until that happens, then we'll, we'll continue doing what we, what we believe and want to prove to be the best. And if you make any evidence of that would be happening, I'd open the books.
That's great. And as I was saying earlier this morning, we're gonna have to leave the data answer to what we're voting on. We have to be very, very clear on that. We have to be very, very clear on that. So I thank you for entertaining us on this conversation. With, with that, I'm gonna, um, ask for a motion to approve item 615. Do I have a motion on the floor? Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Key, do I have a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Crowell, all in favor. This show is three opposed. I'm staying. Thank you, and let me, uh, stay for the public, I'm abstaining because I've asked so many questions about it. I would never want someone to come back and say that I had a conflict with them. So I'm abstaining, but I want to say publicly that I do approve of what we're moving forward to on with these bonds. I look forward to extending completion of my motion.
And so I want to make a statement as well, so I own school bonds, that's why I abstain from it because I bought some bonds yet. And so I want to reflect.
And thank you, public, for, uh, waiting for us on this. We're gonna go ahead and move to the paper presentation. Typically I have like a time or something or a number on these, so let me go for it. The first one, Tamara, is it Hudgens? And it says general topic, uh, one, hold on, Tamara, let me, let me take, take a quick call and I'll start that clock. The Board encourages and welcomes comments and inputs from patrons, but we cannot respond, deliberate, or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the council agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes and please be reminded that its Board policy to prohibit, prohibit us from mentioning of an employee name when voice and concern are contained. So at this time, could you say your last name for me, please?
My last name is Hudgens and my first name is Tamara.
Thank you, Tamara Hudson-Williams.
So you've taken my first half of the first sentence, but hi, I'm Tamara, I run an organization called Girl Start. We provide science, technology, engineering, and math programs for girls. We were founded in 1997 as a response to the issue that although women earn more than half of the nation's bachelor's degrees, women are represented in less than a quarter of the nation's STEM jobs and even fewer in areas such as computer science and engineering. We believe that girls have great ideas and we believe that with a little help and support, these great ideas can go on to solve the world's greatest challenges. Girl Start has been providing programs in ALEAF ISD since 2015. Since that time, more than 650 ALEAF ISD girls have participated in weekly Girl Start after-school programs and 200-plus girls have participated in week-long Girl Start summer camp programs that are aligned with the TEES and with next-generation science standards. We've also welcomed ALEAF girls to our, uh, Austin Girls in STEM Conference for the past few years. And at Euroclass, we launched the first Girls Houston Girls in STEM Conference here in ALEAF last fall. Girl Start girls outperform non-participating students, both boys and girls, in Science and Math Star with a dramatically higher number of them obtaining Level 3, commended performance or master's performance on both Science and Math Star in the 5th grade. Post-program participation, Girl Start girls go on to take more advanced and pre-AP math and science classes. And the number of courses that they take goes up over time, whereas matched samples of non-participating girls take fewer advanced math and science courses with the number of courses that they take goes down over time. In a manner of speaking, Girl Start is supporting ALEAF ISD's math and science goals. It's important to me as Executive Director of our organization to share with you periodically about the work that we're doing to bolster achievement in math and science in your district so that you know that Girl Start is investing in your district and that we care about providing resources to you. Our programs are free to girls and their families, free to schools and districts. We have been grateful for local philanthropy, we largely leverage resources from outside the district to support our programs here. To date, we have invested more than three-quarters of a million dollars in the district and we hope to continue to do so in order to increase academic preparation in science and math. And the reason why I hesitate to say that number is it blows me away once I did the calculation earlier today. Girl Start After-School launched, uh, the week of January 28th for the spring semester. And at the end of every semester, we host a culminating showcase of activities and experiments. Knowing that everyone's schedules are pressing, should we like to visit, we'd be pleased to welcome you to visit Girl Start After-School showcases this spring sometime during the week of April 22. We are currently serving 11 ALEAF ISD elementary schools. We'll also be providing another two weeks of Girl Start Summer Camp to girls in the district in June 2019. We're grateful to have the opportunity to serve this district. ALEAF ISD is one of the most collaborative school districts that we serve and as is possible, we look forward to deepening our relationship with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Next person I have is Mr. David Jay. Please review me if I don't say your name correctly. Am I, am I here? I'm gonna stop. Please, uh, state your name first, sir, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Chambers, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and distinguished guests. My name is David Joseph, David Joseph Almeida. I am a proud parent of Elsec Junior Samuel Almeida, who is in a dual credit program. I have been an educator for the past 17 years and hold six Texas teacher certifications, four at the high school level. I had the privilege of working as a teacher in ALEAF ISD from 2008 to 2010. I want to commend the ALEAF Independent School District for its partnership with Citco Petroleum described in the winter 2019 edition of the ALEAF Communicator. I applaud Citco's contribution of more than $1.5 million for programs that promote the importance of STEM education and provide educators with the resources they need. As you may know, Citco is a subsidiary of PDVSA, better known as the Venezuelan State Petroleum Corporation. The United States has imposed official sanctions not only on key officials in the outgoing Maduro regime, but also on top PDVSA officials. PDVSA assets in the US, including payments due to Citco, are being held in escrow until they can be safely delivered to the legitimate democratic government of Venezuela headed by interim president Juan Poyto. The people of Venezuela have suffered immensely under the corrupt leadership of outgoing dictator Nicolás Maduro. They are now determined to see a peaceful transition back to democracy and look forward to the arrival of much-needed international humanitarian aid for their citizens in the coming days. One way we can all support the people of Venezuela in their aspirations to end Mr. Maduro's unlawful usurpation of power and convene free and fair elections is, paradoxically, to support Citco. I encourage you to apply for a Citco gas card and patronize their many stations throughout the Houston area and the state. Not only can you earn 10 cents in fuel statement credits for the first three months from the date the account is opened, you can also opt to pay using their handy cash gas card, which functions much like a debit card. With the cash card, you can save anywhere from 10 to 17 cents a gallon. Over the long run, you could save significantly on gas and have the satisfaction of knowing we are helping the people of Venezuela reconstruct a free and prosperous nation. Thank you for your time and with your permission. We need to go because Samuel needs to finish his homework. I also wanted to add that I have, um, prepared, uh, for each one of you in a separate envelope, the statement that I just made along with the, uh, the visuals.
Thank you so much, you can get it too, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
And then let me apologize, if I had known your name was Joseph like mine, I would have said it correctly. So let me state for the record, Mr. David Joseph Almeida.
Almeida, thank you.
Thank you. You have a patron presentation for Mr. Daniel Barone. ALEAF parent, ALEAF taxpayer.
Greetings, thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Daniel Barone, I'm an ALEAF parent, ALEAF taxpayer. My concern is that each month I come to every board meeting and I hear more about the board's personal information and I do have the opportunity to voice my concerns about the business of the district. Just now I found out that your middle name is Joseph. I know Andy Biggs was, um, used to work in the district and we can go on and on. So I just sat in a policy and legislative meeting and it was, um, some, um, union members in there and they were having dialogue with the board members and I raised my hand to make a comment and I was told that I was not allowed to make a comment. So, my concern is that the, the pledge of allegiance that you all say every month says with liberty and justice for all. The mission statement of ALEAF ISD says the ALEAF Independent School District in collaboration with parents and community members will provide exemplary education. The district goals also says that ALEAF will continue to build positive relationships with all stakeholders. District priorities says community opportunities as a district of innovation. The values says meaningful relationships and meaningful work. All of those statements include me. If you are failing on your mission statement, then you are failing the district. We just, uh, uh, we adjust the agenda. Um, I have to sit here and listen to the, to the whole board meeting and then not have, to have an opportunity to comment on the conversation that you all had throughout the two or three-hour meeting. And then the president, the report, patron presentation is being moved. I would have liked to spoke on some of the in, uh, information that you all voted on before I was allowed to come up here and talk. Um, so I'm not happy about that. I want to know, when is it allowed that the community gets involved as a taxpayer and as a parent? Because as it, as it stands now, it looks like it's a show for the administration and a show for the board. There's no reason why the tax, um, the auditing company should be the same auditing company for 30 years. The reason why it's the same auditing company for 30 years is because they're giving you exactly what you want. You are custom ordering what you want from those individuals. The district talks about the bare minimum, we asked that the, um, the board meetings be live-stream. Administration stood up and said, well, according to the policies and procedures or the law, we're giving you the bare minimum. The district of innovation is giving the bare minimum. When it comes to holding the board accountable, when it comes to holding the administration accountable, y'all are comfortable with getting the bare minimum, but you want to hold the teachers and the community, the taxpayers and the students to a higher standard. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable for me, so I'm trying to figure out how do I get my voice, the things that you got on this wall, just in case you forget about it, it's posted on the wall, it's posted on the website. How do I get the things that you all say that y'all are doing? The things that, that the superintendent is being held accountable for. There is no reason why my email should be being blocked to the school board, but I can get a, a personal letter from Madam President and Madam Vice President sent to my home. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable. Let me say that again, a personal letter, not a district letter, a personal letter from Madam President and Madam Vice President, but I can't file agreements through the proper chain of command through email because my emails are blocked. My certified mail is being refused. My hand, personally deliver letters to the district is being refused. No, we've had, we have a directive that we will not sign for your packages. Is that in the mission statement? If you're not gonna give me what's in the mission statement, then I advise you all to rewrite, rewrite the mission statement, rewrite the policies and procedures. Because I'm gonna continue to ask for whatever it is that you all have in writing until y'all change it. If you don't want to do it, say everybody but Daniel Barone. Say everybody but my children, say everybody but my voice. That's what I want to hear. I've been to the state capitol every month so far this year. I'm going to continue to go to the state capitol every month this year because I don't have a voice in my own community where my children go to school, where I've been on boards with, with the superintendent since 2011. But now, because I'm not saying the district, uh, 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 platform or the district dialogue, now my voice doesn't matter anymore. But you're still receiving my taxi money. You're still getting credit for my kids' education. So I'd like to know, where can I go, where am I allowed to go when my voice can be heard? Who am I allowed to communicate with? Where can I send my emails? Where can I send my letters? Thank you.
Ms. Wilson Barone. At this time, according to the agenda, we're gonna move to item number seven, which is to consider or approve the 2019-2020 academic calendar and staff development waiver.
Great, what do you think, uh, Mr. Chambers and, and Miss Williams and the board?
Uh, tonight, uh, we're gonna have Carla Kessler, she's our Director of Federal Programs in Grant. Uh, she also oversees, uh, the EIC, who has spent lots and months working on the calendar. Uh, we know that we have come to the board, uh, previously with calendar information, so tonight, uh, she would like to share with you the proposed calendar, uh, that is coming from the EIC. Carla?
Good evening, board members and Mr. Chambers. Uh, as Mr. Smith already stated tonight, we're going to be asking for your approval of the 2019-2020 academic calendar. And as you know, that proposed calendar is prepared and recommended by the District Educational Movement Council. We have several EIC members here this evening and if you don't mind, I might just stand so that we can recognize them. Thank you all so much for your hard work and service. It's so nice of you to come out such an ugly evening, so thank you very much. We will, let's find it. Thank you, then. Um, we won't spend a lot of time on the slides that are coming up. Uh, it was here in January and I think that you're mostly unfamiliar with this information. Thank you. In January, we did discuss the process and procedures that the EIC goes through in order to develop the calendar and so it's just a visual recap of that discussion. Um, we, uh, also shared the specifics of the recommended calendar and I think that you all have received a copy of that. I know that's a little bit hard to read, but I think the copy of that is probably a little bit easier. Uh, we briefly discussed how the proposed calendar looks in comparison to some of our local districts. This is probably a, this is a better visual. Uh, the cells that are highlighted and they need to match the calendar that we're proposing to the board this evening. Uh, you know also that tonight we will be requesting the board's agreement to submit a waiver to the Texas Education Agency uh, for staff development minutes. We have done this for many, many years. Um, as you know, we are required by state law to provide 75,000 instructional minutes each year. Uh, we can use up to 2,100 minutes for professional development purposes and so we request this for you in order to provide two professional development days during the course of the year and also for minutes to release, have early release of the middle school and high school for our, um, professional learning communities on this day.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is a test for, just the mic so that your voice can be heard.
I'm sorry, can we do that?
That's much better because once this recording goes out and everybody wanting to hear about Amber, I mean, you're, you're.
Very good, thank you. So, uh, do I need to review the staff development waiver, you feel comfortable with that? Anyone need to review the staff development? Uh, so, and just a reminder too, that even with the staff development waiver that we're requesting your approval of tonight, uh, all campuses maybe will continue to have more than the required number of instructional minutes over the course of the 2019-20, uh, 20-year school year. So, just to recap the major, uh, pieces of the calendar, we have 176 student days, 185 staff days. We'll have one week holiday at Thanksgiving. We'll end the first semester by winter break, which will allow us to have only a difference of four days between the first semester and the second semester. And we have built in some bed weather days in addition to the additional minutes that we have built into the calendar. So we'd like to recommend this evening that the board approve of the 2019-20 academic calendar and the waiver for staff development as recommended by the District Educational Movement Council.
Carla?
Of course. We can make sure the board's aware of this when they're discussing the calendar.
Of course.
What we have to do is all that.
To be clear, everyone, this is not a issue for anybody. This is 2020.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes, it has, you know, one of the things that we always try to do as an educational improvement council is to make that calendar work for everyone. Student instruction is our number one priority, but trying to make it work for everyone. Of course, as you know, and as I mentioned at the January meeting, we do meet with the districts and the regions to try to coordinate calendars. One of the things that we have learned is that many districts like ourselves try to align the calendar with their local community college. Because we have students that attend that community college, we have tried to make sure that those calendars align. We have worked with the Houston Community College to talk to them about the difficulties that occur when the community colleges calendars don't align with one another. We have neighboring districts whose community college is Lone Star, for example. Their spring break is different than HCC. Those districts want to align their calendars with their community colleges as we do. So we have talked, as I said, with HCC, with the vice chancellor there, and they have let us know that they understand our concerns and we will be working closely with them next year. And then we'll be working with the local community colleges to see if we can't all get in alignment. Because regardless of what we do as districts here in the region, it is difficult when the community colleges don't also align. So I think we are, we're making some headway and hope to have better results next year. So at this point, we do meet, if the board approves the calendar as it's proposed tonight, we will match the Houston Independent School District Calendar, Spring Branch and HISD. It does put us in a position where we're not using the same calendar as some of our surrounding districts. We did do, just as sort of an aside, we look at employees by zip code, try and get a feel for where our employees live. We do have illegal penal employees, obviously, not just teachers because we have over 6,000 employees. And we have a great percentage, if not, if not half, then very close to it, of employees that live in ALEAF, in HISD, in Spring Branch. So, just so that you have that information as well.
That's not to have to worry about.
Right, right.
No, I just want the board to be aware. We've attempted for the last, how many years? Four, five years, kind of run, spring break's up because that's critical. We just couldn't, we couldn't make it work. Lone Star adopted theirs really early, HCC adopted theirs really early. The districts that are associated with Lone Star adopted theirs based on Lone Star. And before we found out about it, before we figured out it, couldn't fix it. We worked with HCC and we attempted to, we tried, but we didn't.
So are we saying that the spring break for next year is aligned with ACCs or it's not?
It is, it is. But as a result of that, it's not aligned with like four good ISD and J Ds in the American, west and northwest country.
No one, no one really, no one's really concerned about that because when spring break happens, for three weeks everyone's here on spring break.
I would always say, there is no need to worry.
No, honestly, I mean, I know that people who have young kids do worry, are concerned about that. But in actuality, the people who have to commute to those other districts are happy that you guys are on spring break, you know, the traffic. So, you know, I mean, we are living in different days and times concerning spring break. So, there's a lot of flexibility. And I think at the end of the day, as long as we are showing great concern for everyone, the fact that, thank you so much, the committee for being here, the fact that we have a committee that works very hard to, you know, talk to the people, to your peers and everyone, and then bring back something good. So it's not just in a, in a tunnel and then you bring it to the board and then you have to go back and explain to your friends. I'm pretty sure you guys spent some time talking to people back in the day. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve, and I think we have to read the actual item recommendation. It's recommended that the board approves the 2019-2020 academic calendar and a waiver for staff development as recommended by the District Education Improvement Committee, EIC. Now, entertain a motion to approve. Okay, Ms. Brown, I have second. Second is key, all in favor of approving the calendar and all its contents. Thank you, but the record shows five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan, I'll say, thank you Carla and all the committee members for being here. It's great, we appreciate it.
Always good to see your faces, everybody. Thank you. At this time, yes.
Very good, so.
So I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna release it after all that hard work, a long day.
Thank you.
The campus, thank you so very much.
Not, not very easy decision, trying to come together, the consensus on, on a good calendar that will make all happy. But I like it. It's a good job.
Don't run too fast, guys, you'll be scared. Okay, at this time, I'm, I'm excited to hear the report for the family engagement.
Very good. So we're going to bring up Chancellor Terry. Chancellor is our coordinator for family and community engagement program. And I see that she has brought a number of her staff. So it's always great to get an opportunity to hear about all the wonderful things that are going on in our base department. So Chancellor.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Usually we still look that well, it's raining outside. So they went home and got their hot cocoa again. So, all right, thank you again for having us. So, good evening and thank you for allowing me on behalf of our entire team. And before I start off, I'm a little bit under the weather. So I apologize if that sounded a little awkward tonight. Is that okay? Can you hear me okay? So, good evening, thank you for allowing me on behalf of our entire team to share with you the progress of our ALEAF family engagement program. It has been six years now since I myself began this journey into the world of family engagement. It has definitely taken a team effort to accomplish all that we see today. The team involved to make this happen included our administrators, our teachers, front office staff, our families and our amazing family liaisons. Our team involved to make this happen also began with you, our school board and our superintendent. And again, we thank you and on behalf of our ALEAF families, we thank you. Our families are continuing to engage in our schools and partner with ALEAF teachers and staff members at a higher level, helping to ensure the academic success of their children. We have witnessed tremendous progress throughout and towards families engaging and investing at a higher level. So, yay. So I would like to begin our presentation today by sharing with each of you a few of our celebrations this year. We can celebrate that a little over 100,000 visits have been made to our campuses. That represents the number of times our doors have opened. Over 8,000 families have attended open house. That was a 10% increase from the previous year. And last year, we had an additional 10% increase. Our goals this year, our goal this year for families to engage and interact at their school at least once is 69%. Currently, 66% of all of our students have had a parent or a family member interact with their child school. So we are well on our way to meeting and possibly exceeding our goal. ALEAF is consistently leading the way. This holds also true for family engagement. Our team was honored to be chosen to present at this year's Family and Community Engagement State Conference. We received stellar feedback and requests to learn more about our model approach to engaging families. In addition, last year, myself and two local colleagues from Klein ISD and Fort Men ISD worked together to offer the first collaborative conversation symposium being held here in Houston. The symposium was birthed out of a need to bring together our staff. So that included our family educators and family liaisons. And we wanted to offer a space and time for them to learn from each other, share ideas and gain insight that they could then take back to their communities and to their districts. The goal was to increase the staff's effectiveness to serve their respective communities. The symposium has actually caught the attention of the Texas Education Agency and Region 16. And we have been invited this year to come together and present at ASSET. We've got word of that this week. So they challenged our team to share this model with other districts across Texas with the hopes of it being replicated. And again, we hold our second collaborative symposium in March. So over the past years, I've had the pleasure of sharing with our school board activities and programs offered through our ALEAF family centers. Our family liaisons continue to give a thousand percent to our families each day by offering programs such as ESL, nutrition, parent leadership courses, academic support and homework help, to name a few. They also collaborate with our community and schedule once a month community guest speakers, providing our families with invaluable resources. Many stories continue to emerge from our family centers, such as one story involving a family member who was new to the country. She signed up to take a computer literacy course in the family center. When she touched the computer for the first time, tears ran down her face because she said, and she shared with the liaison, how she felt she finally had something and the skills to be able to help her family move forward and do better. Our families continue, our family centers continue to serve as a hope through education for our ALEAF families. I would also like to share with you our celebrations that are facilitated by our family liaisons and campuses that extend beyond the walls of our family centers. This fall, a great opportunity was made available to our families through a collaborative effort between ALEAF and AmeriGroup. Over 50 of our families traveled to Hastings during the day to participate in a family CPR class. Parents and students engage in an interactive course that taught skills that could save a life in the future. Our family centers also continue to offer our ALEAF family leadership course through our partnership with parenting partners. Here you can see our families attend a seven week course focused on leading within their homes, becoming the leader within their homes. Families in the class who shine as potential family school leaders are invited to attend a two day professional development alongside our staff and administrators. And they're trained to co-lead with our staff the parenting partners leadership class. This past October, nearly 30 family members invested two days into this training and they learned how to teach and become trainers to other families and teach other families. We were excited to celebrate in December at Kerr High School where 135 of our families graduated from the leadership class and 25 of them went on and will go on to take the training to become leaders in the fall. Our families have risen to the occasion of being engaged in our schools. Of our 914 active volunteers, nearly 500 of our volunteers are family members of our students. Our families don't just drop their students off and go home. They are staying and asking, what can I do to help modeling a true partnership? And these leadership roles extend beyond volunteering. They serve on face advisory councils, district committees. They serve on EIC. They serve on our school health advisory council. They also serve on our fam committees on the campuses. So they, they serve on our LPAT committees. So they do have roles on our campuses and are able to contribute. We can also celebrate the many family events that have occurred throughout the district at all of our campuses, including evening programs and programs during the day. What's truly exciting is that our campuses have increased the awareness of the importance of offering programs and events that are linked to learning. So currently, almost 1,800 family events have occurred throughout the district. Of those 1,800, 930 are linked to learning. So they are focused on academic connections to the home. We continue to offer events that are relational, such as coffee with the principal, dad and daughter dances. These are all important to ensure meaningful relationships between the school, families and students. But we have also increased the number of events that focus on meaningful work, which includes family engagement links to learning events. And I would like to talk a little bit about how our ALEAF family community program is truly impacting student learning. So through our partnership with the Houston Area Urban League and Scholastic Books, we have funded intermediate literacy nights. We actually have one occurring right now and we'll have another one in March as well. So through our partnership with the Houston, we, we've held, well, first of all, this program, the literacy nights, they're held at all six intermediate campuses. Over 400 families so far have participated. And the night begins with the organization reading poetry and stories to our families and students. Then the students engage in a 15 minute quick write. So they have 15 minutes to create poetry or a story. And it's been very engaging to the point where the parents jump in and compete as well. And they present and they recite their poetry, as you can see there. And our students win gift cards to Walmart and other prizes. And then our families all leave with two books to take home to encourage reading at home. Many of our campuses also continue to invite their families to engage in a memorable family night at the Children's Museum. So 21 of our elementary campuses have participated this year in the family night at the museum. And the other campuses, so this is for elementary campuses, the other campuses have actually invited Children's Museum to come into the school. So it's free to all of our schools and all of our families. At the museum, they engage hands on literacy events, STEM activities, and 250 to 300 families per campus are attending for free. We reimburse all the transportation. So it's a completely free program for us. So now over 5,000 families have participated in this free evening of fun with the families and learning. I'd like to share a little bit about our ALEAF Jump Start program. I know many of you are familiar with it. ALEAF continues to focus on early childhood. We understand that it is important and it is key to ensuring that students are reading on the appropriate grade level. So through our family centers, our elementary family centers, we continue to offer our ALEAF three-year-old Jump Start program, a home-based program that prepares our three-year-olds for pre-K. It is currently offered at 24 of our elementary campuses. Currently, it is funded by the Arnold Foundation. Our families who have kept consistent attendance, they receive food vouchers to go to West Houston area ministries, as well as a mobile pantry is coming to ALEAF starting next month, for them to be able to take their vouchers and get close to 50 pounds of food for participating in the program. Our liaisons work very hard to test nearly 400 families on the RAC and ALEAF test so that we could have a baseline in regards to their learning. 141 families are currently participating in the program. And I'd like to thank Laura SDBM who heads up our ALEAF Jump Start program this year tonight. She does a great job. ALEAF ISD's Family and Community Engagement Program, we invited, we were invited to partner with Rice University in 1516. And they began a pilot project to study the program itself. And then that turned into a full-scale evaluation. We will conclude that evaluation in the spring of this year. Rice University, the reason they chose the ALEAF Jump Start program is that it was unique in the fact that it connected to the curriculum and the TES, as well as it was a low-cost program compared to other programs that you might see throughout, such as HPE and others, who are a lot more expensive than the Jump Start program. So again, we will end that evaluation at the end of, in the spring of this year. So due to the success of the Jump Start study for Rice University, the Family and Community Engagement Program has been invited to participate in a two-year-old program entitled Lena Start. The program will be funded by two foundations. We're currently waiting to find out if we receive that funding. If funding is granted, we will offer the Lena Start program to our two-year-old future ALEAF students, assisting them with building verbal communication skills. Lena Start is a free program, 13-week program that will be offered in our family centers and families are poached to speak more to their child. They also encourage the families to read books to their children and the children are outfitted with a recorder that shows their progress. Each family is asked to place a recording device in the bed, in a bed near the child's chest. And it will track the, and analyze the sounds the baby hears at home. So it's like a pedometer for your words and for sounds that the babies are hearing. The approach is based on research showing that when parents make a habit of talking to a very young child, that child is more likely to read on grade level and it will have long-term benefits when it comes to literacy. So along with our celebrations, we can also celebrate our programs with beginning to operate, or beginning to operate within the recommendations, the dual capacity model. This is a model that has been time-presented by the U.S. Department of Education. And we are, we are few, only about two or three districts that are actually using the dual capacity model within our Texas area. So we're excited about that. The framework was developed by the U.S. Department of Education and builds on existing research that stresses... we are, we are few, only about two or three districts that are actually using the dual-capacity model within our Texas area. So we're excited about that. The framework was developed by the U.S. Department of Education and builds on existing research that stresses the importance of building the capacity knowledge both of families and staff in concert. The framework models a shift from role involvement to family engagement. So by integrating the dual-capacity model strategies into our fam initiative, we have the opportunity to accomplish the following: increase opportunities to build capacity through an increased focus on professional development for staff and families; we will create and provide more family activities and events linked to learning; and offer more opportunities for families to collaborate within our schools as true partners in education. Underneath the dual-capacity model and through the U.S. Department of Education, there are two programs that they have very strongly recommended to help build dual capacity, to help build capacity, as well as help the academic success of students. So two strategic programs that I will introduce to you that we have begun. First of all is our parent-teacher home visits. Our parent-teacher home visits are an effective pre-K twelve strategy. It's used to increase student academic development and growth. It helps build capacity with teachers and families. It improves school climate. It increases cultural competence and connection, and it builds community support for public education. Home visits are not new to ALLETE. However, the model is focused on very intentional conversations as opposed to more of a meet and greet. So in January, nearly ninety-five staff members gathered together in this room to learn about parent-teacher home visits. And through the parent-teacher home visit model, what it looks like is two staff members visit the student's home for approximately forty-five minutes and engage in a conversation with the family member, focus on the family member's hopes and dreams for their child. The visit is pre-scheduled, and the visit is focused on building a foundation for future conversations between the family member and the teacher. Campuses do not target specific groups of students. Staff aim to visit a high-performing student's home, mid-performing student's home, and the home of a child that may be struggling in a specific area such as attendance, behavior, or grades. The program's voluntary, so teachers volunteer to be a part of it, and they do earn professional development by participating. The last program I'd like to share with you is our Academic Parent Teacher Teams. So along with our ALLETE Parent Teacher Home Visits, we have invited and we will invite campuses to participate in the U.S. Department of Education highly-recommended program, our Academic Parent Teacher Teams. This training will take place in the summer. So Academic Parent Teacher Teams is an opportunity pretty much for families to come together in a room. It takes a lot of time and saves teachers' time, I say it takes a lot of time, but it saves teachers' time in regards to individual parent-teacher conferences. The parent-teacher conferences happens in the room with all the parents present at one time. And then the teacher is able to share the academic goals for that specific child, as well as the academic goals for that particular class compared to the rest of the school. So they all set goals for sixty days. The parent, the teacher then models activities for the parents to do at home. They go home, they begin those activities for sixty days. Then there's a one-on-one meeting with the teacher and the parent to see how is the child progressing, are there any questions, what does the parent need help with? And then the group comes together again after sixty days, and they share the progress of the class, as well as the progress of the children, and then they again engage in a new skill that they begin to practice with their child for sixty days. A lot of times, that skill might be inferencing, it might be just specific sight words, things like that, that help the child specifically. And here you can see the model. I know it's a little bit small, but you can see that it's made up of usually fourteen meetings, but again, the campuses can tailor that down to two or three. And you can see here the outcomes. Our goals continue to remain the same. Our families feel unwelcome, our families continue to be engaged, informed, and equipped. And we will continue to develop, evaluate, and sustain our current and future programs, always beginning with the end in mind. We want to ensure that our teachers are able to provide a welcoming environment, that they're connecting family engagement to student learning, and that they're honoring and recognizing families' units or levels of, and funds of knowledge. We would like to see, our goal is to see, our families who can serve in different roles. They can be supporters, encouragers, monitors, advocates, collaborators, and all working together to ensure the academic success of all of our students. So a conclusion, I would like to recognize and celebrate the true heroes in the work that we do, our campus family liaisons. They have done tremendous work, working with our staff and administrators, to not only carry the vision, but communicate the vision and live it out while assisting our families on a daily basis. So I thank them, as well as thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. I'll take any questions if you have any.
I have one question. On the home visits that you'll do, I noticed that you say that the parents will reflect after each, because there's kind of a final process that will determine if that's successful.
Yes, so what they do in Maine is they have a debrief. As a campus, there's a debrief. But they're also able to look at the progress of the student. Really, the first visit that they do this year, we're just saying, just lay a foundation for relationship between the teacher, building that trust. So we're laying the foundation this year of just building trust, having enough open communication channels. And then the second visit, we're hoping the schools will move to a second year, and that second visit is more focused on how can we support you academically, how is your child doing academically? And what we're really hoping to see is that parent-teacher home visits begins to work collaboratively with academic parent-teacher teams. So you'll see those home visits mixed with those parents all coming into the classroom together.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I was really impressed with the sixty-six percent of students who've actually had a family member that's come to school. And I know that y'all talked about it for a while, about how it actually makes our grades go and improve, and start improving if parents are involved. So thank you very much, Dreammakers, for all the hard work that you do. And then the last thing is, I'm interested to, I'm seeing how the LEAN project would actually look like for, to be, you know, a small two-year-old being taught and, you know, the given, what kind of a product that we'd see over a long term, depending, you know, two-year-olds and three-year-olds in Jump Start, and then, you know, four-year-olds in pre-K, and that kind of thing.
Definitely, we are tracking that. We have tied our students, so we know the Jump Start families and so forth, and our students are able to follow them throughout the years.
Anyone else?
Couple years, we talked about one year. I'm sorry.
We talked a little earlier.
So I was excited, you presented a lot of information, it was a lot of information. And I'm really appreciative of all the efforts and things that you guys are doing to engage the families. The question that I, that I would ask real quick is about our Jump Start Program. How, I guess, let me put it this way, I'm presuming that we're going to talk more about the pre-K centers, and I'd like to know how the Jump Start Program is integrating or connecting, because we're already seeing the connection of a two-year-old and a Jump Start. You know, we're talking about Politeen, Politeen being the pre-K program, so.
I believe the data that Rice University will be able to share at the end of the year is, will be able to show us, how it is closing the gap, just some preliminary data they've shared with us a little bit. We see the closing of the gap between those who aren't made in those, you know, programs that begin before the kid steps foot in the door. And so definitely, we will be able to see that data at the end of the evaluation.
In terms of the conversation about facilities, where we house such programs, it would be a part of that, the whole facility discussion, if we use that term, for the pre-K, and if we can, where we could add capacity to the rules.
The other thing, you were talking about the home visits. What, what age group were we talking about those home visits?
So currently, I'll turn back and be able to tell you which campuses are doing home visits. So currently, right now, we have ALLETE Middle School, Elson Ninth Grade Center, Hollup, Kilo, and Leeseman. And what we did, we did a conference call, we invited principals to listen in, learn about it. We first invited those who are gone through the family-friendly school coaching model. So most of these are national family-friendly schools, and so we said we would love for you to take that next step, because you already began building that relationship with the families. And so we'll continue to invite other campuses to be a part. So right now, it's off levels. We were really excited to see Elson Ninth Grade Center jump on the board.
Okay, I needed to hear that, because for whatever reason, when you hear about pre-K, pre, two, I'm thinking home visits for kids who are not in that district yet. These are home visits for.
Parent students.
Parent students.
Yes.
Okay. And it's pretty much all the questions I have right now, because I'm still trying to digest a lot of this information. Are we going to see you at the board retreat too? I know that you presented. We'll find out. To be continued. Thank you so very much for your thorough report.
Thank you.
We're at item number nine on the agenda, so I'd like to take a moment to talk about board committee reports. Before I do that, what I'd like to talk about, we're doing a lot of different changes with our commitments, our core values, our board operating procedure. But what I wanted to mention was, I talked to a few individuals about making some changes, so I want to make sure that it becomes our record tonight. We currently have, as a committee, one of our standing committees is the Policy Committee and Legislative Committee. I'm sorry, because I don't have those written down, I've done that for a long day. Why, everybody get to go home. I'll sit here. Okay, so we have the Policy and Legislative Committee, and I would like to say, I would like the continuation of that committee, and I would like to continue to have Ms. Darlene Brown lead that committee, as well as having Ms. Jennifer Keath, and I haven't talked to, yes, I have, Lenny Trump, to continue to be on the Policy Committee. I know that you guys are doing lots of work, and I'm going to ask you for a report in just a moment. But I wanted to say that, and want to publicly say, thank and say that how much I appreciate Ms. Butler was led our evaluation committee for our super-tenancy evaluation, for our board evaluation, and helping us to get it going, making all of those great notes. I attempted to talk to you, but finally did have an opportunity to share with her that I'm asking that she move into another committee to continue to be announced. I want to say, Ms. Butler, how much I appreciate your efforts. I know it's very difficult, you know, mom on the board as well, and out of respect for the fact that, you know, kids are getting older, and there's some, you know, when they become seniors, there are lots of demands, I mean, you know, to the parents of the year. So we want to make sure that you have that flexibility on that. But do know that though you're not leading the, that committee, your input is still great, you're needed, and I will begin with you on those final notes. Okay? All right. Well, with that said, I'm going to go ahead and announce that the committee is going to, we will continue with the evaluation committee with Mr. Rick Moreno, myself, and I'm asked Ms. Jennifer Keath to begin leading that committee. With that thought, she had a lot of information, she was already able to take some of the notes that we had, and we're going to take those evaluation committees to the next level. Okay? All right. So at this time, Ms. Brown, do you have a report on the Policy Committee?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Actually, the Policy Committee did have a meeting today, started at, well, it's four-thirty, five to five-thirty, and we, it was a special meeting call to, specifically to speak to the representatives or the presidents of the Teachers Association to discuss policy DFBB local term contracts. That was something that was, that was a policy that has been brought to our committee, and we have been discussing it for a while. And one of the things that our committee, after getting the feedback from Dr. Powell, we had asked that Dr. Powell get a group together, and what she did, provided that us with that information. However, our committee also wanted to hear directly from the representatives of the teacher associations. So that meeting was held today, and we will have our notes that we will send to be included in the report.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing, reviewing those notes and seeing what the outcome is going to be from that. Is there anything else on the legislative portion?
I had to talk to you, it's a relative. There's several TASG meetings, et cetera, TASG, TASG conferences, what they may do in the, for the technology so related to legislative issues. So I would say, they're probably a long one, actually, to have some information. I could say, for more of the citizen, if you get it, how do we do this? But the sense that you have retained before, we've got appointments and the opportunity to get us to visit. Not only are local reps concerned, but they're concerned about the decision-making issue. So I just need to get a kind of idea of that. The second thing is, I believe Craig.
He did.
Or someone, I can't remember if I asked you, is Craig May.
He sent a, he sent an email, no, it's about the chamber, about the chamber, but I'm trying to find out which board member will be available to attend, and I need to look up the date again. The other, and I'm glad, yes, that you gave, typically every year, and in the past, we didn't have a real legislative committee. I think Ms. Winkler and Dr. Hanson and I kind of formed a committee, because we were the only ones that had the flexibility to go up to Austin and to meet. So there is information, I'm a little caught off, because there's so many that's going on there. But let me explain to the board what that typically looks like. TASG normally has a legislative day, and when they have that legislative day, in the past, we would attend. The only kind of issue with attending is TASG goes through about three hours of going through every legislative item. You would, so that means that you go down at seven in the morning and what have you, and then you would meet with them. So when they go to that three to four hours, the problem is, most people that you want to meet at the Capitol are not available by the time, you know, by the afternoon, because typically, people are on the floor by the afternoon. So what we have done as an ALLETE board, we have dropped in on the TASG, you know, to see and pick up the package, because they have, you know, more information there. But what we decided was to pre-schedule our meetings with our legislators there. So we met with, in the past, with, when he's now the senator, but we met with Senator Ellis a different once. So, and I would tell you this, you decide to go, please put some roller skates on, because Mr. Chambers likes to run all over the building. That's not true. But, so there is a day at the Capitol, but we just do it a little different. While most, and a lot of the other boards will be there, but we do it a little different in the fact that we've also had that meeting with those legislators. So we have had them here with us, this is an opportunity for us to go into their area as well. So if there's any board member who's interested in going on that day, we need to find what that day was typically done. In addition to that, there's also an equity supposing that's going on, and I think it's happening about that same time. So we, so let me put it this way, I'm quite sure I will be available to attend this year, because the commitment is, is spring for me. So I'm asking for people to go. Typically, Mr. Chambers, do you know, he gonna, we'll work those details out. And what I was going to ask him, because we would normally like to go up early in the morning, and he would ride, but there have been moments where at the last minute, things change, so we need to be prepared for. so we need to be prepared for the transportation and going on there. So we work those things out, we try, we're on here. Okay?
And just so you know, if the date that the TASCY, TASCY meeting doesn't work...
Right. We need to, we can still go home.
As a matter of fact, I would almost advise that we try to do that a little bit later, when those bills are filed and actually going to be, if they're actually... I'll send you the dates as well.
Yeah, because the deal is, if you wait too late, if you're waiting in the afternoon to go see your representatives, then you're pressed for time, and you're in traffic trying to make it back, because it's a one-day trip. It's not a night, it's not overnight, because it's a one-day trip. So be prepared to get up early in the morning, drive down, go through, see the reps, and to come back. So we'll get those dates, and I see some head nodding of people that will go. The other thing I need, someone to attend it after we suppose. And I need someone to attend, the Chamber has a trip there's going as well, so.
I'm gonna go to Equity Symposium.
No, it's, you, that's all right, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, because I've been seeing the notice. Yeah. And here's the thing, that Equity Symposium has kind of changed, because TASCY is involved in doing it, as well as the Texas Conference of Black School Board Members, which I was a past president of, as well as MASVA, the Native American School Board Association. So they're pulling this all together. This is the first time that they've attended it, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a successful deal, because of the individuals that are involved. And as you can see, the, they kept sending the information. So I would be shocked and surprised if people did not attend that.
Oh, yeah, that date is, well, what is that, February the 27th?
That's it.
The Texas College of Black Office Summit is February 25th to 26th.
So we get all of those dates together. I think everyone's trying to merge up there at the same time and make an impact.
But Equity Symposium's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we've decided on those, but that's part of the Legislative Committee. Okay? Let me move on to the Evaluation Committee, which Ms. Key has previously stated that she will, she will work with us last time. Are you happy so much, again, you wanna kind of share some information with us of your approach? Are you ready for that?
Yes, I'd like to share the information with the committee, or with the board.
Okay.
But I've done a lot of research about surrounding school districts through TASCY, through our own instrument that was used in district, looking at administrative evaluations through the TBA, those kinds of things. I've done a lot of background research, and I've put some things together for the committee. And we'd like to set up a date, March 1st.
Yeah.
If that works for you.
Rick.
Okay. And then present it to the board on March 5th. March 1st is down in the middle. It's in the middle. I have a good time to make any changes that the committee wants to make, but we present it.
Okay. Look, I'm firm, and I'm gonna make sure that we get paid, I'll help you nail this up for that. Ms. Rowe, we know we're gonna have another meeting before that, or we just gonna have it sent out in four months and a year, that is true.
For me.
For your Policy Committee information.
Okay. We will have it in four months, so we'll need to stay there.
Okay. All right. Just wanted, I've been wanting to make like, if you thought another meeting was gonna happen. Okay. All right. Are there any other items concerning the Committee? All right. Board, at this time, we're looking at item number 10, to discuss and consider approval of the board operating procedure and the resolution of his support of, of the operating procedure.
So it's good. You should have a hard copy of the revised board operating procedure, which include the decisions that officials may be given, as well as the approved board releasing connections from the level of the rest.
Right. So absolutely. So, Board, I hope by now, we should have had an opportunity. We've been going through this in every update. Let me say thank you to each and every one of you who participated in all of the updates and give the feedback, because that is greatly important. There was a question, and I just want to add, whether or not we were adding these into the operating procedure, we did have them before. The wonderful thing that I can say is, these are ones that I know that we own, these are ones that I know that we drafted and we drafted. And we all agree that that was, that it would mean what we're attempting to do, and even those people who come behind us. Okay? So with that, is there any other comment or statement concerning operating procedure?
Um, yeah. So I, well, I just wanted to make a statement. Those commitments that we did, that work was really meaningful. That was a great way for us to write those, and have some heat to them, and have some role playing to contribute to.
I totally agree, and I think that they were, I totally agree with you, Ms. Butler. And I think that they were done in such a way, I would like the, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have a post it on the web, but that would be good to have, so that as we are starting our meetings, we would understand what it is we're talking about, and what we all agree that I believe is worth considering. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the board operating procedure and all this final revision. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll take it to approve.
Okay. So, a second?
A second.
Okay. I know, everyone's getting kind of quiet. Come on, let's keep the moment going, everybody. Okay. So there's a, it's been moved by Ms. Butler and seconded by Ms. Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. The record show is 5-0. And typically, I would not speak on behalf of the board members, but those board members who are not here have also sent their information and their support. As a matter of fact, Mr. Moreno was so excited, they seemed like he was voting on it, while official adios to it on our board workshop. At this, yeah, at this time, I wanted to also add, give you one minute, Board.
And I would also like to say that Dr. Trump, especially, would come up and sign the commitment to the mask form.
No, we didn't want her to sign the mask form, it's signed later.
Yeah.
Okay, Board, I want to stress how important it is for each and every board member to adhere to and agree upon the board goals and procedures. So as a public display, I'm asking for a commitment, I'm requesting that each board member publicly affirms that they will follow and adhere to the board goals and the operating procedures, especially because we put so much work and effort into it. And with so much that's going on with so many other districts and other boards, I think that we have an opportunity to be a shining star, or to be a lead, at least. Okay? With that, we have a resolution. And I'm gonna ask that each board member, I'm gonna say publicly, as a board member and board president and Williams, I do publicly affirm that I will follow and adhere to the board goals and board operating procedures. Mr. Nguyen, John Nguyen, do you publicly affirm that you will follow and adhere to the board goals and board operating procedures as they are written?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Trustee Darlene Rowe, do you publicly affirm that you will follow and adhere to the board goals and board operating procedures?
I will.
Thank you. Trustee Jennifer Key, do you publicly affirm that you will follow and adhere to the board goals and board operating procedures? Thank you. Trustee Natasha Butler, do you publicly affirm that you will follow and adhere to the board goals and board operating procedures?
I will.
Thank you for making that public. I want to also add that the board will be writing, signing a resolution. And I laugh, because, you know, typically, you have a resolution, you want everyone to hear with their resolution. And so, Board, I'm gonna say publicly what it is that the board will be signing. Whereas A-lee Independent School District Board of Trustees recognize that A-lee Independent School District Board of Trustees, along with the Superintendent of Schools, comprise a team of eight, providing direction and operational guidance for education of our students. And whereas the Board of Trustees of A-lee Independent School District wish to declare and convey our collective belief and commitment in written form for all to see. And whereas the Board of Trustees of A-lee V.I.S.D. wish to formalize and memorialize these beliefs and commitments as a solid foundation guiding all actions, decisions, and effort. And whereas each board member, trust, Board of trustee, by signing this resolution, does publicly affirm that they will abide by board operating procedures and policies and execute their duties with fidelity. It is therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of A-lee Independent School District hereby declares and convey and respect all our attached beliefs and commitment as a team of eight here in the name. You sure about that? Well, what I wanted to say was that there were five, yes, and two rolling drums. And we will still have the other board members to sign. Thank you. Okay. At this time, Board, I do have an item in which we requested to now place on the agenda, and that item is number 11, to discuss and consider actions of board council. I'm gonna ask that we go into executive session, if you guys are okay with that? We are going to do it based upon, yeah, item number 551.071, for the purpose of private consultation, before determining on any and all subsequent matters authorized by law. So at 8:34, 22 seconds.
Oh, yes, I was there at the council.
Yeah.
So what are you doing?
So what I do, I've actually answered. So this sort of feels like, I can't tell you how many late, late nights, 90-hour work weeks, and dinners in China, and that.
Right, alba belayer.
Oh, yeah, like, that was my scene in the first quarter of the year. So I live in, like, a class of supervisors. And I had to, just aligning my...
The thing I was really telling you, how can we very carefully sequence the curriculum, and align it to the ACT and the SAT? How can we use this diagnostic class? How can we all use this to establish, and write new rules? And are we going to help distribute everything, and paragraphs, and at the same time? So no one had ever really, um...
I think I've seen the idea there.
Yeah, exactly. So I just feel like, you know, it kind of makes all the same small, and you really look at these tests in one, in one sitting, right?
Right, right.
And then you look at your daughter's writing, or, I mean, not your daughter's writing, but if you look at a student's...
I mean, yeah, I've got two daughters that are kind of...
Yeah. No, I've seen here, I mean, my sister's a student at the University of Michigan, and her writing is just like terrible, right? It's just like, high school writing, it's really tough to write, to frame out a paragraph, right? Exactly. And what you find is, of course, the same weaknesses and errors are committed that are committed in actual student writing are what makes surprise also the things that are tested. So it is found an integrative solution to, to basically writing instruction and ACT prep at the same time. So it wasn't in classroom, ACT prep, but it, they were being, students were being prepared. And drumroll, so the results were on the board. So my students in my first year of instruction, I did, says, for the third year, which I taught at a private school before, in Tulsa, from Chicago. But in my first year, my students have the highest ACT scores in KIP history, anywhere in this region, in any school, in nation. Uh, yeah, so, and it was really cool, we were above national average. It wasn't just the highest KIP, it was the highest by the block. And we were able to repeat that for years in a row, and the scores were so high, so much higher than my colleagues, because in schools, KIP is a nice school for a living school. So I'm never slouching, never slacking off, right? My principal, I had to teach, so that I could go stand as a teacher of instruction and teach all the students, because I had 180 students in my instructional roster. So what I mean, so I left KIP, there are several reasons why. One is just the, uh...
Yeah, they're going through a transition kind of phase, right?
They, they are, that's, I would say that their expansion is the biggest reason why I left. But more the, the lack of sleep that students get, the lack of sleep.
Yeah, quality, all of it. Yeah, they're putting a little too much on them and not giving them...
I think it's also sort of exploiting the environment correctly for educators. And then, and then the biggest one is, is I think that they approach education through the lens of, you know, these kind of corporate... the lens of, you know, these kind of corporate formulae, and that's been my... Can I read? Yes, thank you so much.
You're flying into the floor, you had to drive to Dallas at Ford. I live here at Ford. No, I was in Atlanta, I had a 47-minute connection at one of the busiest airports in...
Oh.
Yes.
Why don't you just go on, I don't know, why don't you want to say the literary part?
No, no, they're all the way there, in forward, so that we can see. And Mr. Ryan over here in town is determined to... They're all getting turned.
Do you see that with the... They found a, like, some local, there's this, that's one.
Yeah, but it's one of those, right, smash the apple in the middle, and... You should kind of move it back, like, 45 minutes. From here to Dallas? It's a good year, it's worth the sacrifice. Yeah.
Thank you so much for people who stood up, for better session at 10:25. Okay, board, let me see my hand. I would like that agenda to show up. How do we open the agenda? Oh, wait, 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 others, others, walk back into my... All right, so we were in executive session on item number 11. On item number 11, we had discussion and considered action on board council support. After discussion, I would like to put it for the board, the office, I think, to request for information concerning a solicitation for special counsel. So I'm gonna ask the board, after all the conversation, is there anything else that you guys want to say on that? Now, I have a motion to consider action on board council to request for information.
Oh, no, a motion to request information.
It's the second. So it's removed by Ms. Key and seconded by Mr. Nguyen, all in favor. It's a four to zero, let it show four to zero, so Mr. Chambers will make sure that we get information, and you two will ask to get coverage for requesting that information. And they will talk more details, I guess, for workshop, and that will help the rest of board members to hear. But prior to that, make sure I draw some notes out of what we talked about, so you can go to the board notes, to the rest of board members, okay? Yes, let's give that to sweet, so that they are aware, because requesting for information, we have a timeline which we wanna get moving on that, and so I'll have that all laid out and the board, full board, without a connection. So full board, okay? All right, board, with that, that is the last item on the agenda. 10:25. Thank you, everyone.